We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carry. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray. Were you all able to pull up the financials on your computers?
Yes, we got it. Ah, okay. Well, expenditures and revenues are coming in as expected or as budgeted. Did a cash flow analysis, I told you I would do that periodically to analyze where we are on a cash flow basis for investing or placing a million dollars with the city's interest-bearing account. And we're in really good shape as far as our cash flow is concerned. We're in actually such good shape, we're gonna probably look to maybe put some more money into the interest-bearing account. But I'll get with Kelly a little bit where we can discuss it now, if you want to.
Do you wanna kinda tell them that, I guess they need a little bit more information about where we were at and...
Well, we started with a million dot placing, we had 3.4 million dollars in cash total. We put a million dollars of that into an interest-bearing account with the city, which earns approximately 1,600 dollars a month. Right now, our cash flow, we are at about 4.4 million dollars. Reason for that is our property tax revenue comes in really strong in January, February, March. So we'll have about four or five months of excess cash. And if we're earning 1,600, 1,700 dollars a month on a million, I think it might be wise to do that for the next, double it up and do it the next four or five months. And then in June, May-June is when we start getting a little tight because our BEP stops through the months of June and July. That's about 500,000 dollars a month. BP's paid out over 10 months. And because it's what I would call liquid, it's basically a savings account, it's nothing for us to pull the money back over and use it for, if we need it, for anything.
Scott, is your recommendation that we move 1 million dollars into that account?
I'd say maybe up to another million.
Okay.
And then if that's okay with you, the board, and then Kelly and I can really drill down to, is it 500, 750? Because it's gonna depend on some of the, maybe the future cash flow needs for the cameras, other things that may be on the horizon.
I think he was thinking, we've just had so much success with the interest that we've been getting from that 1 million, if we've got the cash flow that we need, we should be capitalizing on making interest, on some additional money if we can safely do that.
What's that gonna do to, what we're wanting to do tonight possibly?
It wouldn't, it would not affect that. I mean, we would make sure that if, I think that's where he's asking for up to, and then that would give us the flexibility if, like if we decide this is the direction we want to go.
And we can pull that out within one business day?
Yeah, I just don't wanna, you know, the city and Gail's kinda doing us a favor, I think. They don't benefit from this, but I just wanna keep the, you know, hey, we're sending you money and pulling it out, I wanna keep those transactions to a minimum, just so it's a little work for them, not much, but, and I think, you know, some of you may be thinking, why don't we pay some, some of our loan debt down? Still not, I'd like to really, since this is kind of a short-term, taking our excess short-term funds and using it for our benefit. If it was excess long-term, then I would be more willing to consider, and maybe that's a discussion we have for next year's budget to kinda consider maybe doubling down on some debt, once we've built up our fund balance to a level that I think is where we're getting into a surplus beyond what we really need to maintain. Cafeteria, I guess just a quick summary, we're on track still to break even, and I'll say break even plus or minus 10,000 dollars. Right now, we're at a deficit, or I think a deficit of about 1,200 dollars on your financial statements. Last year at this time, we were at a deficit of, I think, 16,000. And then, don't forget, we transferred 74,000 from GP into Cafeteria. So, you're at a, last year, probably 80, 90,000 dollars lost in the Cafeteria versus this year of coming close to breaking even. So summarize that, I think we're on the right track. We need to keep going where we're in the direction we're in, and at the end of the year, we'll hashed out all the numbers and we can compare, do a year-over-year comparison. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ray regarding the financial report? Hearing none, I'll entertain my motion first to approve our financial statement as presented. We have a motion and a second, any questions, comments? Hearing none, Kim, could I have a roll call vote, please?
David Quainer?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Tim Boppel?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Second item that we discussed is taking up to 1 million dollars out of our fund balance to place into an interest-bearing account. And so I'll entertain a motion to transfer up to 1 million dollars into our interest-bearing account.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions, comments? Hearing none, Kim, could I have a roll call vote, please?
David Quainer?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Tim Boppel?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have Personal Computer Systems contract in the amount of 4,455 dollars.
This is, and Danny, if you wanna come up, I'm probably, you're gonna get you to give a Reader's Digest version of what is happening here, but this is a contract where we are spending some of our remaining Category 2 funds that we have from E-Rate. As Danny talks, we have used all of our Category 2 funds for North Clinton, but we still had some funds available for Clinton and South Clinton that we are wanting to take advantage of, so Danny, give them a little Reader's Digest version of what we're gonna be doing.
So this is called the MIBS, is short for managed internet and broadband service. So it's basically, we contract with a company, what they do is they monitor our wireless and our wired network, so they can tell us when there's outages, they can help us pinpoint problems. Also, what this program also does, it allows us to virtualize a piece of equipment, which, that equipment's 10,000 dollars by itself, and we would need three of them. So by doing this through E-Rate, what that price you see there is after the 80% discount. Plus, we had to pay the full price for North, but Kelly explained that. But it allows us to not buy those three pieces of equipment at the same time. So it allows us to be more effective in the management of the network and no analogies happen. They help us monitor it, they give us tips too, so they've actually come out to school and helped us fine tune it also, so.
So he actually RFP'd that and PCS won the bid, and we've done quite a bit of work with PCS in the past, and they've been a good vendor, good reliable vendor for us.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation to approve contract with Personal Computer Systems in the amount of 4,455 dollars. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quainer?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Tim Boppel?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have a property purchase. This is Mr. Ray?
Yes, well, we can, come on up, Mr. Ray, we may be leaning in on you, but we actually got the heads up about this earlier this week, so this has been added to your agenda as a last-minute item, but we received word that there was two additional lots for sale behind Clinton Elementary School that had just become available to our knowledge, 200 Marshall Street and then a lot right behind it, which is 303 Linart Street. So I've provided you a diagram of where those, where those lots are, but it is basically directly in front of the West Wing where 5th and 6th grade is at Clinton Elementary School. And so I charged Scott Ray with talking with the owner and beginning a negotiation process. Scott, was he beginning at 110 or 105? I can't remember what his beginning price was.
105.
105. And so we walked the property and we, we kind of, they talked back and forth, and he has agreed to sell it to us at a price of 95,800. And so we told him we would take that to the school board, and then of course, we'll have to take that to city council to see if they would buy that on behalf of us. But what this would allow us to do is that basically gives us that entire strip of land behind Clinton Elementary School with the exception of that one house. And as Scott was analyzing the land, and we've been discussing and planning to meet with Roger on which one of those pieces of land we wanna develop into parking first, we obviously know that we're gonna have to deal with some drainage issues. And so after Scott analyzed walking the property, he feels like if we can secure this property, then we'll be able to build parking and help address some drainage issues at a cost savings if we, rather than if we did not own the property. So Scott, do you have anything that you wanna add to that?
I guess just so everybody, I mean, the praise value on the Anderson County's property assessor is, for both pieces, is 90,800 dollars. And then again, he offered at 105 was his original offer, and reviewing the property and just considering the true value to us, I felt like, you know, counteroffer at 95,800 was appropriate, and he accepted. All pending your approval, of course, I did tell him I don't have the right to...
What's gonna happen to the daycare?
Um...
Well, he's gonna notify parents and give, you know...
Is he wanting to go out of business now or at the end of school year?
Uh, I told him that is kinda open where he needs, wants to be. I said, we're obviously in no rush, as long as we have a contract and everything's official. If he needs a month or two months to notify parents, or three months.
We would certainly, we would certainly work with him on that.
Unless we charge him rent.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't wanna, I don't think we wanna be a landlord.
We're gonna talk to temporary.
Yeah, but you get into the, you know, the roof leaks or the HVAC goes out, we could, we could write a lease that makes him take care of everything, and that's a possibility, and I'll discuss that with him if he wants it.
No, I didn't, I just, that's the point where he's gonna do the daycare.
Yeah, I'd say if it extends beyond a couple months, we might consider going and purchasing it with a lease, and then he, you know, he's obligated for all...
If we're gonna find a daycare, I would think we'll have a lot of any of the parents mad at us. I'm providing a piece of property, I just, we're gonna have some people mad at us if we kick them out of daycare.
Scott?
Well, the business is going out of business regardless.
It's going out of business eventually anyway.
That really, that really doesn't have anything to do with us.
Scott, would it, would it be a possibility that we sign the contracts to purchase, which ties us in, gives the city time to initiate on our behalf? Could we make the closing date the end of the school year? Therefore, the transfer of the property would be at the end of the school year if they want to operate this all the way up until the end of the year. Therefore, we know we're locked in, we've got it at the price we want it, but that does not inconvenience any parents, and if they are, you know, if they have contracts with parents currently that are in place, then that would allow them to fulfill those contracts. Would that be a possibility?
I think it is, I'd probably want to, let's say, assuming we approve, or you approve the purchase, to meet with him and discuss when he, what he's considering. I don't think that's a decision for us to make. I think it's a decision for him to ask us if we're willing to do this.
Well, he's selling it for a reason, so if he, if he needs more time, we will work with him, but ultimately, we aren't shutting down anything. He is the one that's shutting it down, and he needs to determine the timeframe in which he would want to do that.
And just let him know we're flexible, is what I want to convey, is that we're very flexible.
I always, you know, contract is, a contract to purchase or a contract to sell is somewhat, I can say, I'm not an attorney, but it's only as enforceable as you're willing to pursue it.
Yeah, but my understanding, I don't know that he's actually wanting to go out of business, he's trying to sell the property and the, and the business. So that's where I come up with, are we putting them out, are we gonna be the ones, when we buy it, say that he's gone, because he's trying to sell the business and the property. It's not, it's, how it went on the market, how I found out about it was, it went on the market, just like I just said, business and property.
Well, why don't, you know, why don't we make a decision, I guess, is to approve or not approve the purchase? I meet with him and then report back to you what his wishes and desires were based, because he knows his clients the best, he knows his parents best. How many he may have been gearing down over the last couple months, I don't know.
That's what I was asking, is he already geared down?
So let me get with him. I did tell him I'd call him tonight to let him know what direction we wanna go, and then, you know, if he's wanting to do something sooner rather than later, I'll just have to get in touch with you all individually and let you know that.
Yeah, I just feel like that's in his hands, he's the one selling it, he knows.
He's offered something for sale, and we assume are willing to buy it, so let's do it.
Let's go ahead and purchase it, and then we're flexible as far as his time.
I'll make a motion, we purchased that piece of property.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quainer?
Yes.
KK Webster?
Yes.
Tim Boppel?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Good job, Scott.
Okay, moving on, it's time for principal reports. We'll start with Ms. Sharp with Clinton Elementary. We're glad to see you're nice and healthy this week.
Thank you, I feel a thousand times better, and I'm glad we did not close for sickness. If the need comes, maybe, but we're all glad to be in school. We just wanna say from Clinton Elementary that our PLC meetings continue to be strong. In ELA, we worked today on some summer reading goals, so what would it look like if we did have a summer program for kids much like a summer reading list? What would that look like? Or grade level needs, what do they need to work on most coming up to the next grade level? We're also still working on intentional planning, and in math, we are working on the same thing for summer. Ms. Dean has gone in and she has observed some number talks, so we're gonna be giving some feedback on those and making plans, and then also for fluency. Monday next week starts Love Week at school, so we are excited about that. It's also Random Acts of Kindness Week. So we will be showing appreciation to our students and teachers. City Lots Church has adopted our school, so they are gonna come. When we have lunches, the younger kids who can't have a guest that day for whatever reason tend to be a little more upset than some of the older kids. So City Lots Church, they're gonna have members, they're gonna come and eat with those younger students if they see them crying, and just encourage them, and I think they're even gonna make them little goodie bags, so we're excited about that. They are also going to be providing food for our teachers on Valentine's Day, so we're sharing the love. Also, on Monday, we are gonna begin our school-wide iReady incentive, and we are going to be ninjas, so we are excited about that. We are going to be slaying the iReady lessons. Each grade level comes up with a pass rate, 70% is pass rate. We've encouraged some grade levels to go above and beyond that because some of the lessons are easier, so we really want these kids to get into iReady, and for each 10 lessons they pass, there will be prizes. And at the end, we're gonna have some ninja games, so that will be fun. Students and staff have been collecting, or making bowls for Empty Bowls Night. We're currently collecting the food for that and the donations for the student bowls, and it will be on the 21st from 4:30 to 6:30. And then pending approval, our spring fundraiser is going to be a Glow-athon. So we're wanting to start that on the 25th, and it's a Walk-Athon, so students get donations to the school and to sponsor them for the Walk-Athon, and they have different prize levels, so they can get different glow swag to wear at the Glow-Athon. Our goal is 15,000 dollars, so we are going to challenge that. We would like to hopefully move some of our play equipment to the back playground, I think that would be a good, safe decision. And then also, we've had the teachers make a wish list, so, and then on the 27th, we'll be having our assembly at 1:30. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp.
We are currently in the process of doing a fundraiser at South Clinton Elementary to raise money for the South Clinton Park Initiative, the Inclusive Park, and I think it's particular, we're doing it at all three schools, but I think for our kiddos at South Clinton, they have really taken ownership of it because we use that park so much, and they feel like they wanna be a part of building this new park that we can use. So we've been taking up money from the students all week, and for every dollar that they donate, they get a little hand that they get to put on a tree. So I've got a big tree hanging on the window outside my office with lots of hands, and hopefully by tomorrow, lots more hands, but we've had a lot of donations so far, and we're really excited about that, so. And this week, we had class pictures on Tuesday, and then the principals all attended a Ready with Resources training, and we got some good ideas for putting together a team and putting together a process for ELA textbook adoption. So that was a good meeting that we all got to attend. Next week, on the 12th, I'm gonna meet with my leadership team, and even though it seems like it's early, we're gonna go ahead and start thinking about next year. So I have purchased the Culturize book for my leadership team for every member, and I'm asking them to read that with me, and we're gonna talk about some different ideas for being champions for all our students. And some of my ideas include, some of our students that have behavioral problems or attendance problems, or they have issues at home, having a check-in and checkout buddy that's another staff member that's not their teacher, that they're accountable to every day, and calming corners in classrooms are something that we're looking at, too. So I'm excited about that. On the 21st, we're gonna have our empty bowls from 5 o'clock to 6:30, and we have them in the display case. The teacher bowls at South Clinton right now, and we get a little competitive, so everybody's excited to see who's gonna have the top-selling teacher ball, but we have some really good ones, I don't think mine's gonna be top-selling because it broke in the kiln, but...
Character, adds character, yes.
I was a little devastated, I was gonna say, a little devastated by that. On the 26th, we're gonna attend school safety training, and then coming up in March, just another reminder, March 1st is Read Day, and I know probably KK and Merle have already been asked to come and read by Ms. Hawkins, so I hope to see you there, and we're all working on our costumes for that already. And then the 5th will be Spring Pictures, and then our family STEM night is gonna be on the 7th, so lots of good things coming up at South Clinton.
Thank you, Ms. Ben Steele. And then last but certainly not least, Ms. Ryle?
I'm just gonna sneak through.
We have had a lot of interesting and fun things that we've added to our after-school programs after Christmas break. We decided to go ahead, and since we have kinda lower numbers in 6th grade from one year to the next, we decided to go ahead and add our 5th graders on sort of a trial basis, if they have met certain goals and have had a good attendance and good grades. We've had some 5th graders that have been invited onto, into the, to the hangout program as well. So hopefully, if they see how much fun they can have in 6th grade, they're gonna, they're gonna get to stay and choose to be with us again next year. We also have a 1st grade, 1st and 2nd grade coding activity after school, so we have little 1st graders and 2nd graders with their little mouse robots, and they're coding them to go through a little maze to get the cheese, and they're having the best time ever with that. So we're getting a lot of little hands into some activities. And then we've got a new 1st and 2nd grade tutoring activity after school, so we have lots, still lots and lots going on to extend the school day for our students and give them some additional academic support. We've also done ELA PLCs this month, and we'll do math next week as well, and I had talked to our coaches and said, what about, we had been looking at our team training, where we talked about the classroom as the second teacher as part of their environment, the classroom environment, and relating that to our team teacher evaluation rubric. So we had teachers take pictures of their classroom walls, and then we just kind of looked at the team rubric and got to show them, yes, you already have a lot of this in place, and kinda discussed are there things that they may need or not need that may be affecting their classroom instruction, or maybe some things that they could do to enhance their classroom instruction. And in coming up this month, we have, we've had class pictures on the 4th, we will have our PTCC meeting on the 20th, and our empty bowls on the 21st, and our school safety training and parent conferences on the 26th, and we will also do Read Day with some pajamas on March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our principal reports.
All righty. Please take a look at the items for information, next school board meeting will be here on March the 14th, Day on the Hill in Nashville is coming up for those of you that have registered, and we will move on into the director's report.
You all have a copy of some highlights of some things that are happening across Clinton City Schools. I'll go ahead and begin with our addition of our banner that we brought to show you all that's sitting beside David Quainer tonight, but we received word Suzanne Oliver took the special education team to a statewide conference that is called Partners in Education Conference last week, where they were awarded in front of the, in front of the conference, we were one of six districts that was chosen as the 2018 exemplary access district. And you've heard us talk about a grant called the Spadee Grant that we participated in for the past two years, and so we were one of six districts that received the exemplary award for how we implemented that program, how we participated in the training, and then the educational outcomes that happened because of that training. So certainly, we were very, very proud of that accomplishment, and so that banner, we will, we will fly across our district very proudly. Also, we received good, good news that I emailed you all about, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew. You know, we entered a formal partnership with ORAU last month, and they helped us write a state-level grant, and we actually received word that we received, we're calling it a 30,000 dollar grant because it was actually 29,979, and all the supervisors said they were gonna pitch in 7 dollars each to make that 30,000 dollars. So a 30,000 dollar grant that we are going to partner with ORAU to purchase supplies and materials and then teacher stipends to incorporate some high-quality additional STEM opportunities across the three districts. And the focus of this grant will be a week-long summer camp, which will be held the week of Memorial Day, that Tuesday through Friday, correct, Lori? And also, we are looking to incorporate some camps over fall break, spring break, and then after school. And so while it will have a variety of STEM opportunities, the focus is going to be on some robotics and incorporating robotics into our STEM offerings. And so we are just thrilled to be able to enter that formal partnership, to be able to learn from the content expertise of ORAU. They are basically gonna create these grants for us and then come and implement those for us this summer while our teachers participate with them and learn, and then next summer, the teachers will teach the content with the support of ORAU. So that is the intent of that grant, and actually, the funds for that are gonna come and roll down to us in March, so we'll be able to start spending that money very soon. Wanted to let you know that in collaboration with the City of Clinton, since we were one of 14 districts across the state that received exemplary status, we want to make sure that we continue to publicize that to people who enter our city because it's certainly something to be proud of. So we have purchased four large signs that will now, that are now located at the entrance of the four main entrances of the city, so outside Mariner Point, coming in South Clinton, down Charles Seavers, and then Lake City Highway. So the four main entrances into the city, you will see a large sign that says Clinton City Schools Exemplary District 2018. So I appreciate Roger and the city's support, and we purchased the signs, but they went and put those up for us and made sure that that happened in all of the legal ramifications that you, all the legal laws that you have to follow when hanging a sign, so we appreciate their help. As you know, Empty Bowls is coming up, February 21st, I've listed the times for you. We have staggered those times just because we're doing it all in one night. Central office and principals have made their bowl. David Quainer, I'm very proud to announce that I think I have upped my, upped my... David Quainer, I'm very proud to announce that I think I have upped my, upped my level of talent with my bowl this year. So I'm eager, I'm eager to see if it goes for more than $40 this year. But just to give you a little hint, it's going to be a Tennessee Bowl with the state flag in the middle, multicolored. I have a feeling that we are bringing it for second harvest this time. I'm going to be very, very proud.
Who made it for you?
I, Lori, did I make it? I made it. I made it, yes, yes. It's not been painted yet, so the painting part's probably not going to be quite as pretty. But I did up my game, so come and see and pay lots of money for second harvest for my special bowl. Central Technologies, Scott Johnson has been in contact with Central Technologies about when they're going to begin our camera project. They are going to come in and start that over spring break. He did, after I typed this here back from them, that they think they'll probably be able to get about a school and a half done over spring break, and then we will work with them to determine the best timeframes, whether it's after-school weekends or how we need to work the rest of that installation. So that is coming soon. And then I wanted to let you know that on Friday, February 15th, is our next teacher collaborative day. We are going to invite Chris McCarty to come and talk to the teachers just about, just some hot legal topics that are going on, from teacher code of ethics to, you know, appropriate use of social media, special education, how we handle student discipline. And so he's going to hit a lot of the hot topics, talking about just cases around our area that school systems are dealing with. And so that's going to be a two-hour session from 8 o'clock until 10 o'clock. And so any of you all are, most certainly, that's going to be held in the Clinton Elementary auditorium. If that interests you, you are more than welcome to come. The rest of the day, Lori Collins has done a wonderful job of reaching out to teacher leaders. And Lori, how many sessions are we offering that day for our mini-conference? So 27 different sessions are going to be offered in three different timeframes where teachers can read through that, just like a mini-conference, and they'll read through and pick the three sessions that best meet their professional needs and attend that. And that's usually one of our highest-rated collaborative activities that we do throughout the year just because it's very individualized, so we look forward to that. And then just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on where we stand as legislative session has went into session. John Reagan, who is our representative, has been chosen. They are having four different education committees this year. So it's a different structure than we've ever seen before. There used to be just one education committee that was bombarded with lots and just got bogged down. And so they are going to try this to see if it kind of eases, eases the workflow and increases the efficiency of the workflow. So they'll have a higher education, a curriculum and assessment, a K through 12. And the last one, let's see, a higher education curriculum assessment, K through 12, and there's one other one that I failed to remember. Anyway, he's going to serve on the K through 12. So he is going to be the chairman of the committee that really is driving a lot of the legislation that directly affects us. And so Dr. Borchers, Dr. Parrott, and I set up a time with him while we were at TOS Legislative Conference this week. And he gave us a good hour of his time, and he had lots of things on his desk and wanted to know our opinions. And we really encouraged him, as things come across that education committee, if he will reach out to us to get an honest answer of how that's going to impact all three districts in his county. We would greatly appreciate that, and he made the assurance that he would keep in close contact with us. But he asked lots of good questions, we asked lots of good questions, probably one of the most, it was just a real effective conversation. We all three came out and thought that we need to do that more often. But we did get a chance to hear Governor Bill Lee. He came to see the group of directors, and then we were able to meet our new commissioner of education, who is Dr. Penny Schwinn. And I think a lot of us were a little skeptical just because she was coming from outside, and, you know, we just always, you know, just kind of hold your breath. But I was, I was actually very, very impressed with her. She came to one of our networking events and very, very personable, has some great personal stories about how education has impacted her, and just her true passion for kids really came out that that is her focus and that she doesn't care to stand up for them, and no doubt she will have high expectations. But I think she appreciates the work that Tennessee has been doing, appreciates how we have been improving at such a quick pace and wants to build upon that. But just a real true sense that I think she's going to collaborate heavily with directors, collaborate heavily with districts, and it's going to be, I think it's going to be a little bit of a different relationship than what we have seen in the past. And so I'm eager for her to get started. She did come, and she has already visited Anderson County Schools and Oak Ridge City Schools, so I was a little sad she didn't come see us in Clinton City as well while she was here. But she has made that promise that she will visit all schools, so I'm sure that we will see her at some point. So that concludes my report. I did give you a letter of our exemplary district and then the email about our winning the ORAU or the state grant in conjunction with ORAU, just for your records. So any questions for me?
All right. Any new business or further business to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned. And if we could, go ahead and stop our recordings.